Marshall City Council to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible). I'm the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. A few comments about the agenda that we have this evening. First off, we're meeting at an earlier time because there, this is an election day and there is a state law that prohibits public meetings from occurring between 6:00 PM and 8:00 PM on election day. So our meeting will be completed prior to 6:00 PM this evening. We also have two published items that had a specific time that was published. The public hearings that we had related to Sounds of Summer was published that they will occur at 5:30 PM. So we will delay that until that time, as well as I believe the award of bids are, were published that they would be acted on at 5:30 PM. And there's three bids to consider. So we will proceed with the agenda. We will skip by the public hearings. We will skip by the award of bids. We'll continue with the remainder of the agenda and then at 5:30 or thereabouts, we will then come back to Agenda Item 4 through 9. Are there any other changes to the agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. The first item then would be to consider the minutes from the local Board of Appeal and Equalization hearing that was held on April 23rd.
Move approval?
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim, to approve the minutes as they have been presented. We will move to a vote. Close the voting. That motion does pass. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 3. This is to consider the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on April 23rd. Once again, the council does have the minutes.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Russ to approve the minutes as they have been presented. We'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And that motion does pass. And now we will move to Agenda Item Number 10. This is the consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the screen that were, are on the consent agenda this evening and they improve, they include, set the public hearing for the MS4 permit program summary of 2018 activities, consider the tree policy, consider the tax abatement for Harrison Truck Center and the action, there would be a call for a public hearing that, which the public hearing would be held at our next regular council meeting, consider the approval of 3.2 percent malt liquor license for the Marshall Baseball Association, and to consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. So is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purpose of a separate discussion? Any other item? Is that what you ordered after too?
Yeah.
Okay. With the, with the exception of Agenda, Consent Agenda Item Number 12, I will enter to a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Russ to approve the consent agenda, 10, 11, 13, and 14, and 15. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We will close the voting. And that motion does pass. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 12. Jim and Glenn, you have comments on this.
Yeah, I'm trying to get to here right back.
Glenn, do you have, you want to start with your question?
Hi, sure. Just a second. With regard to the, with regard to the tree policy here, the, starting with the requirements in Section D, planting and location requirements, are those provisions also included in city ordinances?
No.
Okay.
The tree policy is referenced in city ordinance as a guideline.
Right.
So the policy is really, it's a good, good distinction, you know, this didn't go to legislative ordinance because it is a policy. So this is really more of a guide for staff as you work with the public.
Correct.
Okay, well, that was my concern. There is the distinction between a policy and an ordinance. And the policy gives staff and the city guidance as to what we should do in the future and what we'd like to do and our concerns, whereas an ordinance is a law and is enforceable. And I, I'm looking at the policy and I was looking at the first part of it, parts A and B look fine as far as a policy is concerned. My concern more is with the Section D, the requirements. That tends to look more like an ordinance. I mean, we'd like people to do this, but I think sometimes people might get misled and think, well, this, this is the law, I have to follow this policy. And they don't have to, right? This is, this is not enforceable.
Well, in our mind, that's, it's the policy that the staff follows. It's the policy that staff follows, that's, that's what we are doing, and it means that we, that's how we present it to the public.
But, but it's not enforceable. It's not an ordinance, it's not a law. And the distinction is an ordinance is a law and it's enforceable by the city and the citizens have to follow it. This policy is not enforceable and we're doing certain things here like removing trees on their property and so forth. Shouldn't those things be in an ordinance instead? And I guess my concern was, I'm thinking that, again, the paragraphs or sections A and B are fine as far as our policy, but if we want some of these other requirements as law and enforceable, shouldn't this go to the LNO committee and shouldn't we amend the ordinances to include these provisions?
Just, I know Jason Anderson has a comment to make on this. Just to clarify though, this only pertains to the boulevards. So it's really city property.
This, this applies to city right-of-way and we feel that the engineering department and public works in general are the purveyors of the city's right-of-way. Therefore, we do have the ability to dictate what occurs and does not occur on the city's property. Therefore, this is enforceable and we would intend to put this on the website and make this available to the public. So we do think it's enforceable, but you're right, it's not a law, but the law does reference the policy which we will follow.
Okay. I just wanted to make that distinction because like I said, if, if we want it enforceable against the general public, it should be an ordinance, not just a policy. And I think, what's that?
I want to think this policy is enforceable as long as there is no contradiction between policy and the ordinance.
And this, this isn't different than the, this is, this is the same as what we replaced. I mean, this was the existing requirements, the shals in the ordinance prior to last year for the boulevards. This isn't anything-
Not everything.
Okay. I thought this was-
Part of it was, but not everything. This is more extended.
The, the purpose of this, maybe we could just recap really quickly. The purpose of this document is when we amended the landscape ordinance last year, we took out the provision that did not allow plantings in the boulevard or right-of-way. There used to be no planting in the right-of-way allowed. It was the desire of council and committee review at that time to allow planting in the boulevard or right-of-way. So this policy is a guide for staff to use in how we will allow that to occur and not cause impacts to the critical city infrastructure that you guys are putting in place in that area.
So from that point, it is enforceable. It's the guidance, the city staff to do what the, the stipulates right on the public right-of-way.
So this policy does multiple things. As you point out, it keeps it away from, you know, the corners and sightlines and fire hydrants and things like that, but-
Correct.
But it also kind of complies with the tree city designation to also reflect the population of plantings within the, the city. So for example, the recommended plantings are plantings that either are salt tolerant or are not overly represented in the, in the population. For example, there's no ashes in there, on there. There's no maples because after ash, maple is overrepresented and overplanted in the community based on the, on the survey, so.
And in this case, since this is a policy, it's more flexible, as you said, that some trees are listed here, but it still gives the staff the flexibility to approve other trees that is appropriate for that particular location.
And then I think just a point of clarification too, there's one other shall in here and that's about the getting a, an excavation permit irregardless of where it is and that follows the go-for-one-call law. So that's also that, and because I, I am distinguishing the difference between the shoulds and shalls and, and, and there is, besides Section D, there is one additional requirement about getting an excavation permit.
But there's no cost for that permit.
Right.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at our Paragraph 11 under section, on their Section D there, and it talks about the triangle measured by 25 feet in each direction from the property corner. That's still not in, in city property.
No, that-
That extends into the property owner's property.
That's a good distinction to point out. That, you're correct, is not on city property, but that site triangle is identified by ordinance, by law, in a different location.
So that is in the ordinance? And that was my question before, some of these requirements.
The one that's not is the 10-foot in both directions from alleys and driveways. That is not by ordinance. That was just a good practice. We receive a lot of complaints from people about site restrictions at these locations. We just think it's important to create that triangle of visibility, so.
So there is some overlap here, but it doesn't-
Well, that was my concern. If we wanted it covered and enforceable against the citizens, we should do it in an ordinance, not in the, in the city policy. And I wanted to make sure we were doing that. And thank you for your explanation there. What about the, number 13 there about the easement thing? That, that also is something covered in, in the city ordinance?
So that's stating that any trees or vegetation planted in easements may be lost essentially. No, that's, that's just standard practice on the easements. I mean, if a utility or someone is going to work and operate in their easement and they damage your tree, your tree shouldn't have been there. So we, we try to tell people, we always warn them about anything that they're going to put near an easement. There are certain things that are absolutely not allowed on an easement. A tree planting is something that we're careful with and we say, if you call in a locate, just understand that there's no warranty on your tree. So if it's damaged, the easement is there by right and by law, I suppose, and that's your responsibility.
So again, since this is a policy, this is not a requirement. This is just a, for information.
Okay. Jim, you had a question earlier.
Well, my concern with this is it's, I like trees. And I look at my neighborhood, we have, our boulevards are full of trees and these can, you know, the policy remove trees, it's not impacted value of my home. You know, you talk about values, you remove trees along boulevards in older neighborhoods, you just ruin the value of those homes down greatly. And I looked in our neighborhood, we have rows of maples in the boulevard. Lose a maple, now we can't plant it to match it. I mean, I, I just, I read this, I think it's too restrictive. One of the things that I, the appeal, and I'll use my neighborhood again, is the tree lined streets, the canopy over the streets. And I don't want to lose that because that is, you know, we have a very sought-after neighborhood, you put a house up, it's gone just like that. It was unlisted last week, they had three offers, it was gone in 24 hours because of the trees, the boulevards in which the neighborhood has grown up. Craig, you live in a neighborhood that's older with trees in the boulevard.
The key thing, and you're right, Jim, but the, and we have beautiful maples in our swine, a lot of canopy. The problem with the maples and having the overpopulation of a certain species is the ashbore, all of that. So having the diversity, the problem is, is as we get those big trees, when we lose one for whatever reason, we have to go through the growth again.
And might I also-
That's the negative.
I'll also add that there are many maple varieties that have shallow and aggressive root systems that we don't want near our curb and gutter or other critical infrastructure, gas lines, those, those things in the right-of-way.
And the beauty of that piece-
Your point is that the, this is a recommendation, not a-
Correct.
So if you, you want to plant a Norway maple, you could-
Well, and I, I understand, and I just, I don't want our citizens to be, you know, there's areas, I, I only have a nine-foot boulevard, so it wouldn't work here, but we have neighborhoods with smaller boulevards. And we are a tree city and I'm, like I said, I'm one who really likes trees. How we keep our city cooler in the summer is we shade our roads and you stop the urban heat bubble. You've heard, I've read about that, heard about it. You know, you say infrastructure, shaded streets last longer than unshaded streets. I mean, that's, that's a proven fact that it's, they stay cooler, they last longer. So I just, I want to be careful. That's what Glenn, with your, explaining that this is a policy and not an ordinance, you know, I'm more apt to agree with it there. Do you want to go as far as some other cities? I know Hutchinson has a forestry department where they actually plant the trees, trees in your boulevard for you. They come out, they tell you, you know, I think you have, and maple is one of their choices, by the way, that you plant in the boulevard there. We built our house, or we got four trees, the city came out and put them in the boulevard thus to shade the sidewalks and the street to make their streets last longer.
So just a reminder to council, the trees listed here are the ones that'll be permitted without question. It does say other trees may be allowed under certain conditions after review. So there are, since there are a lot of maples that have root systems that we don't care for, they're not as salt tolerant, they're overrepresented, we just take that on a case-by-case basis. And I certainly wouldn't stand here and say, no maples are allowed in the, in the right-of-way.
You know, one of the things that I know, we've talked about with Preston is doing a short video probably utilizing the bike trail along Saratoga Street where intentionally there was a variety of trees, like several different types of oak and several different types of resistant elms and other species that, that will grow well here but aren't as familiar with people. So when, when the inevitable does happen, when Emerald Ashbore does, is detected in the city, those trees will be of a size that people can actually see them and see their growth pattern. And you can even see them now, even though they've only been planted for a couple of years. You know, those Princeton Elms that are there are like twice as big as some of the other trees, they're really taking off, so.
I just don't want our citizens feeling restricted, like, well, now we can't plant trees.
Right.
I mean, I want them to understand that they're, that we, we want this stuff.
We're promoting it.
That we, how do we make them do that?
And Jim, because you're one of the youth on the council, just as a little consolation for you-
I remember Dutch Elm disease.
Well, no, no, I'm going to even go further back than that. 27 years ago when we moved into our home, those trees on my front boulevard, I had to kick my, my six-year-old son out of them because I was afraid he was going to break the branches. And look at where they are now.
Oh, I, I get how fast I planted thousands of those.
If you knew my, my youngest son, you'd know that I had to kick him out of just about everything.
Are you sure it wasn't you? You had to take him out?
Sharon, you have a point?
Just a, a quick, I guess, look back at this. Prior to the land use ordinance discussion, there was no allowance for planting trees in the boulevard. It was not allowed.
Yes.
So the, the comments from the task force that looked at the building code and the land use ordinance was, we do not want government intrusion on private property telling private property owners to plant trees. That was removed.
Altered.
Correct? Yes. And, but they, but they saw the benefit of trees on city property.
Correct.
That's where this came from. Otherwise, it was not allowed prior to this.
And just to make it clear, this thing went through the review by the, the street department and park department. So Preston was involved in this thing.
Any other questions, Russ?
Mr. Mayor, I would just, I would just encourage staff to maybe make our local nurseries aware of the trees that we're recommending. I mean, so, you know, maybe they are bringing in ash trees to sell to the public, maybe and, and make Greenwood Nurseries, the Runnings and the, and the area nurseries aware of the trees that we'd like to see planted. I think that would be very beneficial.
You know, I think that's a good idea and we'll reach out and we'll probably use Preston with the Parks Department to kind of help us with that.
And not saying that we're, we're not allowing maples, but you know, we're, these others are preferred.
I do think he did reach out to some nurseries and, and review in this as well, so.
A couple of other comments here. First of all, with regard to this policy, as far as enforcement is concerned, are we going to be out looking at this stuff? We're going to do it on complaint basis or, it's nice to have a policy, but if it's never enforced, it's not much of a policy. So what are our plans?
Most likely we're doing it on complaint basis.
Yeah, so that's, that's the difficult thing with, I think, a tree policy in general. It's not just difficult for us, it's any city that has one, is getting people to first understand what the right-of-way is and what that means, and then to even know that this exists. So we'll probably try to do some outreach through city social media and things like that. The only other thing we can do is monitor locates as they come in and if we see tree plantings that occur in the right-of-way, try to follow up.
But I don't think we will be driving around trying to find it.
No, we'll, we'll just, it's, it's as it comes forward.
Well, part of what you mentioned with social media and others is education, so I think you'd want to use education rather than enforcement, so.
Well, even if you go years ago, and this goes back, when I was very young and Craig was not in Marshall yet, there at the time in Marshall promoted, they actually had trees. I don't know if they sold them, what, they just put in your boulevard. I think that was 35, 40 years ago. And that's why you see a lot of the trees in Main Street, that's when Main Street, a lot of that got populated. Yes, they did use a lot of ash trees at that time because ashbore is not a thing, but-
That was following Dutch Elm disease.
It was. And they, they repopulated the boulevards and maybe that's something, the city looks at is, is, you know, MMU's giving away trees, but maybe look at, doing a program like that in the, in the near future, our future.
And I think MMU's program is over. I don't know if-
Yeah, it's been years since they've done it, but-
And honestly, it was not reason as they ended up, a lot of trees left over.
Okay.
Any, any other input?
I just, I want to actually go back to Councilman Bearcole or just to clarify this because I think an ordinance can refer to a policy and a policy can be enforced if the ordinance refers to a policy. Because there's other sections in the ordinance. I know at least one where it refers to a policy. It's no different than a state statute that refers to an administrative rule, like 4620 dot, blankety-blank. If that's what the statute refers to, you can have administrative rules, just like policy. Is it a recommendation or is it a policy we're going to try to have citizens follow? Because on the purpose, it does say regulating vegetation. To me, it does indicate that we are going to enforce this.
It is always our goal, I think, to operate our city right-of-way within a certain set of guidelines and standards and this would be the standard for tree planting.
Well, that was my question, a couple of questions here. And so are you saying that in the ordinance itself, it would refer to the tree policy as far as the boulevard and saying that that has the force and effect of an ordinance? Is that-
I, I just know the ordinance refers to a tree policy. And I, I, I would assume that it means it can be enforced, but-
The ordinance is, tree planted within public right-of-way shall comply with the city tree policy.
Right, that's the ordinance, that's a policy, that's enforceable.
And so in that sense, everything here would have the force and effect of an ordinance then?
Except for things which are not defined, like trees listed, but there's some alternatives to plant other trees if the staff agrees.
Okay, well, that was one of my main concerns is the fact that it would, you know, this appeared to be a policy and, you know, if it is referenced in the ordinance, then, then that satisfies some of the things I was concerned about. And I think one more thing is, is under Part D, Paragraph 5, it talks about trees being planted at least three feet from the curb and the sidewalk. And then it talks about the, the distance being five feet. Are you talking the distance?
For sure.
I'm, I'm wondering what that wording there, as far as it, it's supposed to be centered between the curb and the sidewalk and that space should be not less than five feet. Is it, if we're talking the distance five feet and it has to be three feet from the curb and the sidewalk, it couldn't fit in there?
It'd be a little tough, yeah.
Right, it says, yeah, if the distance is less than five feet. So if it's over five feet, like six feet, then you can get roughly three feet each side. It's a, it's not maybe the best language, but the intent is this, this is already a compromise, I'll start there. Because ideally, we really wouldn't want it within three feet of the curb and gutter and sidewalk either. But when you look around town, we don't have a whole lot of boulevards that are very wide if they have sidewalk. And if the goal is for the council, which what I'm hearing is to encourage tree planting in the boulevard, that's what we're trying to do within reasonable limitation. So that, that's the intent of it. We want three feet from the curb, we want three feet from the sidewalk. If you got a six-foot boulevard, you can accommodate that on the center line of the tree. Of course, it's going to get bigger and get closer, but-
That's why I was wondering if it should say six feet and not five feet.
We could make that amendment.
The only thing I want to be careful doing that is we're discouraging people from sidewalks in their front yards. I think, I think the five feet is good, just say centered in the boulevard. If you're worried about that, just say centered, the boulevard has to be five feet or greater, center the tree.
The idea was that since a lot of boulevards are five feet, we didn't want to preclude people from planting it on the five-foot wide boulevard. That's why basically the requirement is three feet unless it's a five-foot wide. In this case, it becomes two and a half.
So would the three feet be two and a half then?
If it's five foot, yes, that's basically what I'm saying.
So that, that would be the change then to make it two and a half feet?
No, it would be less than five feet, it would, or anything less than six feet would be centered.
Right.
Correct. And it has to be greater than five feet or than five feet, then centered then.
Yeah, I think by changing that to less than six feet, that actually pretty well accomplishes-
No, because in this case, we do want to have it, allow it in five-foot boulevard.
Okay.
Any-
We'll review the language there and tighten it.
Okay. My concern is they're, they're conflicting things, those two sentences. And somehow, we need to reword those sentences to make sure that they're plausible and make sense because like I said, it's got to be six feet and then there's a five-foot rule. It doesn't, doesn't seem to work. So I just think those two sentences, if we can rework those.
Jim, do you have any-
If they're going to be at least three feet from the curb and three feet from the sidewalk, you, you need six feet.
Correct.
So somehow, the language needs to change.
We'll do that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, any other?
Well, I could more complicate it by saying if the tree is 20 inches in diameter, that changes that recipe, but we won't go down that rabbit hole.
How about a motion to approve the tree policy based on the amendments we discussed with the distance?
Motion by John.
Second.
Seconded by Russ. Discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion passes.
Could I just inter, check something here? I think it's important for us to look at those things and make sure we do them correctly. And we spent a little time on it, but I think it's worthwhile that we spend time and think it through because this is going to have the force and effect of a law and we want to do it the right way and not have to come back and change it later. So I do think the extra effort we put into it is well worth it and that's, that's why we're up here to, to do those things. Thank you.
Agenda Item Number 16. Consider the request of Mariachi Fiesta Mexican Restaurant for the private use of the public right-of-way at 329 West Main Street. Glenn?
Thank you, Mereen Council. This was a request made by the operators of Mariachis and we do have a similar situation across the street by the coffee shop. Did go over there and take a look at it and if they do essentially the same thing as the coffee shop did, I don't see a, an issue with access through the area. They are looking at down the road being able to do something in the back alley where they have extra property and would like to sep, separate out that area so that they could not only have tables but extend their liquor beer sales as well. We did indicate that that would not be permitted on the front in the public right-of-way. So we would recommend approval.
Thank you, Glenn. Questions?
Why would they not be allowed, just another question, to sell, have alcohol in the public right-of-way front?
Maybe someone else with the liquor.
I mean, I just, because you-
Yeah, it's a good question.
I mean, you see them biking down public streets of St. Paul in their little brew car.
Liquor license, so the, the license for Mariachis is for the restaurant itself. So we can take that example, if they wanted to have it outside, think of establishments with like patios or outside seating areas, they, they need to remain compact and contiguous to the restaurant or the facility itself. So going out onto the sidewalk is not part of their licensed area. So if they were to somehow make, like in the, in the back of their restaurant, they may make a patio and close it or put a fence around it, then that would extend their liquor license because it is still compact and contiguous to the, the licensed premises.
That'd be similar to what Varsity does, Valley does.
Multiple places in town have that.
Heckle, the hinging post, yeah.
So it just would need to be somehow connected to the, the original restaurant or establishment.
John, similar to the Main Street cafe with wine license or liquor curb.
Correct. So Main State, Main State who, who can operate outside cannot serve liquor outside because it is not a part of the license premise. of the license premise.
This is just contiguous to the rest of anyone else that has this.
Yep.
Is that a state statute then?
Yes.
Other input?
My other input in that, thank you for that. In front of Main State, I think they've done a nice job. And when I walk the city hall, you have a little bit of music playing there and I think it enhances that area of downtown. I think this is an enhancement to bring the public out in front. If Mariachi's does as nice of a job as Main State, I think it's going to be a positive impact throughout downtown.
All right, so Russ?
I would agree with that, Glenn. Just a couple of questions. I would assume the tables and chairs are going to be removed at night because that restaurant is open later than the coffee shop. So I would assume that those are going to be removed at night.
They didn't indicate that they would remove them at night.
We have to worry about somebody throwing them through the front windows?
The table and chairs would be adjacent to the planters. Actually, the open space would be next to the building. So, you know, if there is a wind condition or something like that, they'd have to operate and maintain it properly. And if we ran into a problem, we could certainly give them a call.
And my other question, I noticed on their application that they talked about umbrellas.
Uh huh.
An umbrella can be a very good-sized umbrella. Is that going to interfere with any type of parking or pedestrian traffic?
It has to be the same, same conditions as the seating where it couldn't extend more than to leave that five-foot opening.
And we'll just watch that when they, when they start this process.
I thought they might have meant the little paper umbrellas in the.
Yeah.
It was a big one.
Well, they could be doing that too. I know, I was just concerned with the, with the, what's going to happen at the tables and chairs because unfortunately, at midnight, when other people are walking from other establishments downtown and they see something, it could end up through a front window or something.
They may have to do that too.
And they may choose not to use the umbrellas on that side of the street.
I was just, that's the north side of the street that I would guess. My assumption is they'd want to bring those chairs and tables in because they're too expensive to get lost.
Yep.
And walk away after closing.
Somebody might, might get better than they do.
Any other input?
I make a motion where you approve. I would second that.
Motion by, motion by Jim, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. The motion passes. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 17. This is the request for the map amendment for rezoning. The applicant is James Carr and it pertains to 15 lots on Andrew Street. Ilya?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a request to rezon, to rezon the lots as shown on this map from R1, one family district to R2, one to four family residence districts. The only initial plan to build, planned on building triplexes there, but they changed the mind and changed it to now the plan is to build duplexes. In theory, duplexes are permitted in a single-family residence district as a conditional use, but this rezoning will allow to avoid conditional use because duplexes are permitted use in our two zoning district. As you consider land south of the rezoning area is already zoned, our two, one to four family residence districts. So the recommendation is to approve the rezoning.
Thank you. Questions?
So is this land all owned by Mr. Carr?
Correct.
Right now?
Yes.
Okay, so if I came in as a transplant from, I don't know, say Guam and wanted to build a house there and I wanted to build a single-family house there, do I still get that opportunity or have to do the duplex or triplex?
No, you can still build a single-family house.
Okay, thank you.
And other questions? Move approval?
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion?
I'm going to abstain from this vote because I have the property next to 904 Andrew.
Other discussion on the motion?
I think if you show that map again, up in the, in the Indiana Jones there, the, some of the green ones there, aren't there some multiple family residences up in that area? So fairly close to where he's proposing this already. So it's not like you're changing the whole neighborhood. There's already that type of housing.
As I said, right, there's south of that thing in that area, yes, correct.
And Jim, I don't think the fact that you're a neighboring property owner is a reason to abstain. I think you're fully eligible to vote on this. I think, don't you, I mean, I don't think there's any.
I'll do how I feel is correct.
I mentioned this too before. I think they, you know, they're going to, what they're going to build on that property is some, some nice housing and it's not going to be cheap housing. It's going to devalue the neighborhood. I think it'll be quality housing and I don't think it would hurt the neighborhood at all.
Correct. The plan is to build at least in the north of Andrew, the five duplexes.
Jim, you have a comment?
Yeah, I think they're, they're going to be slab on great retirement or ADA compliant and there is no cheap housing anymore, period. You just don't build a cheap house anymore.
Not, not an enforced building code.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We will close the voting. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ilya. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 18, the special assessments on tax forfeiture property located at 620 West Main Street. Sharon?
Mr. Mayor and Council, and Kyle, if you could just pull up that map so we know the specific location. This property is located across the street from the Law Enforcement Center. And if you recall as well, the council in January lowered the assessment to approximately half, I believe. And the current assessment level went from $19,002.34 to $9,600. The county conducted a tax forfeiture sale on April 5th. There was no bidders on this property. The county's base sale price was $3,000. However, the indication from previously interested buyers indicated that the special assessments was a hindrance to purchasing the policy. We have since April 5th had inquiries from four different individuals interested in the property and interested in actually building on that property if the special assessment was, was lowered. At this time, the staff does not feel that we have the authority to lower the special assessment since the city council set the level in January. And my request to the council is to allow staff and a committee, potentially of the mayor or a council member, whoever you wish to designate, to solicit interest on this property, determine what would be a viable project and negotiate down the special assessment in order to facilitate a sale. According to state statute, the county auditor would not conduct another auction unless the base sale price was changed. He felt that the county board at this time would not have interest in changing the base sale price, so he would not have authority to bring it back for an auction because that would be an option to lower the assessment, put it back on an auction and do that process. But, so we're, I've talked to the county auditor about this and he says it's not abnormal for cities to look at special assessments and negotiate down. My only recommendation to solicitate, or my recommendation to solicitate interest is based on the fact we do have multiple interested buyers. And to pick one or the, over the other, I don't know if that would just be fair without some review. Or to just lower the assessment here tonight and then have a race to the courthouse on Wednesday morning at eight, which we could do. I mean, that's maybe back to the homestead days, but that is an option as well if the council wanted to do that. But it may be the best to, and my recommendation is to establish a committee of staff and council members to solicit interest and review the proposals and base a new special assessment amount based on what that future property could be. That's my recommendation for this.
Thank you, Sharon. And just one clarification on the recommendation. If there was nothing done and in the future, the council made some change like reducing the assessment, would it go on the annual auction in 2020 that the county holds for tax forfeiture property?
If the county board changed the base sale price, if they changed it from $3,000 to another amount, then there's authority for the auditor to put it back on a public auction.
But that would happen until next year.
Correct. I think he just does an annual, I know that process is annual, I think it would just be an annual process.
Thank you.
Yep.
We'll open up for discussion, Craig and then Steve, and I think there's others wanting in on this too. So Craig will start with you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be in favor of the suggestion that Administrator Hanson has and I'd be more than happy to sit on that being is that it's in our ward to negotiate. And I think Mr. Lozinski and I should sit on that with you and get this thing taken care of.
Well, my question, I just want a little more history on the special assessments and the tax forfeiture. So we have the years there that the forfeiture or the special assessments were put on. When did this become a forfeited property? Do we know that?
I think in 2018.
Yeah, last year.
Last year?
Last year, yep.
It's resulting from storm.
Yeah, I believe the actual, the actual forfeiture happened this year, but it's based on the last five years of non, non-payment of taxes.
And so the prior owner of that property just walked away from it or?
There were severe storm damages.
Right, I remember that. That's one that had the tree in it.
He was a gentleman that wasn't as fortunate as other folks and he couldn't afford it.
There was some, there was some other.
Some storm restoration companies.
Took him, took him for a ride.
It was a lot of bad circumstances to a good man, actually.
Yep. And then the city stepped in and out of public safety and the threat to public health and welfare raised the property and paid for it. And then it, he just let it go tax forfeit because he had no option.
And that's what this assessment is?
Yeah.
I'm all for it. There's a couple of things, obviously, we can't do it. If this ever comes up, I think we need to talk about helping people out in times of badness and things like that.
There was a lot of different options. I worked with this gentleman, other organizations. There's a lot of options looked at. It was just somebody took his whole insurance check and there just wasn't the amount there and the house was severely damaged.
He was a veteran, we worked with veterans.
Was a veteran, worked with veteran and we worked, I worked with West Community Action Group, worked with MHFA. I mean, there's a lot of organizations that tried to do this.
Just couldn't go.
My question, as you said, there's four people and I don't know, is there to go back to these four people and tell them to make their best offer? And then we visit after that, what's?
I think the, and Sharon, you probably have some thoughts on this. First off, if there's a committee established, I agree with Craig's recommendation that two council members from that ward would be appropriate. I don't need to be on there, who are on there plus city staff. But I think the other consideration that, that committee will want to consider is what will be the use and will it be something that will serve the public good? Maybe provide some housing, maybe provide some, some tax capacity in the future rather than allow it to just remain vacant for some future opportunity.
One of the interested buyers was very upfront and, and communicated that his plan may be more long-term, that he, he may let the property sit until there's potential to buy additional property in that same area. And he was also very upfront by saying if someone had a, you know, an earlier plan or a better plan, you know, he would be all supportive of it. And so we could just go back to the four interested property buyers and, and just contact them. We could open it up, whatever the council wishes to do.
And it's procedurally, it's difficult because with the tax forfeiture, title now rests with Lyon County and there really is no special assessment because the forfeiture wipes it out. But once it's returned to private ownership, then we can reassess a special assessment. And that's what the owners are concerned about. If I buy the property, how much is the city now going to tack on top of that purchase price? So that has to be negotiated ahead of time with prospective buyers. How much will be added to the purchase price?
That's why it's great to have council participation because we didn't want to have an amount and then come back here and then not have some kind of support and negotiate something.
Title's actually a state of Minnesota in the hands of the county, correct?
Correct, yeah, the county's administration. I have two comments here. One, you know, our goal should be to get as much city money back as possible. You know, we have assessment here of what, $19,234? And so that should be an objective and that's what we've been trying to do as a city. And we also want to be reasonable. The second thing I'm concerned about is fairness, that we're fair to all the potential buyers out there, so they all have an equal chance at it. And I'm wondering if a possibility is, you know, oftentimes they, they have an asking price and if there's multiple bidder, multiple offers, they just increase the amount. And I'm just wondering if that's some way we could do it so it's advertising more than just the four that have indicated anybody in the city should know of this possibility. And if somehow we could communicate that to the people in the city that this property's up for sale and the city's willing to negotiate on the assessments and we could get more potential buyers and a higher price. So again, my concern is fairness, that everyone has an equal opportunity to purchase this property at a fair price.
I agree, the council could go in that direction and the staff would carry that out as well.
I think we have the option to list it if we wanted to, even with a realtor to, I mean, there's, the sky's full of pigeons and I think that'd be good to, rather than to have the entire council batter this around, put a committee together with staff and come up with a good proposal and bring that back to the council. Yes?
Second. Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote.
One quick question. So staff is going to do what then if we give them the power?
I think we should post it in the, in the publication and make it available to all. That would be my recommendation.
We first have to get that authority from the county.
I did talk to the county auditor and he would be okay with that. And he, well, he's no longer elected, is he? But I think he, he can review that with the county board as well.
And we can counsel with the state too to make sure that, I mean, if we just have the ability to negotiate and bring a sale offer back to the council, I think is what my, that's what my decision is. And we're not going to sign an agreement with it. We'll bring it back to council and make sure that everybody's on board with it.
That's correct. And with this piece of property, expectations should not be that high. It's not.
It's not a choice location. There's a lot of downside to that.
This is one where, as somebody who's done real estate, I will tell you, this is one you dump and you run, quite honestly.
Go, well.
Don't put that in the air, Herb.
Well, it's going to, we can't attribute that. You said it, the bell's rung.
It's the truth though, because if you get it back on a tax roll, Craig, it pays taxes.
Exactly, I understand.
Any businessman will tell you that, that's, that's public knowledge.
One last comment then, you know, I think what we have, we're responsible to the citizens of Marshall to do those two things. One, get as much money as we can back for the taxpayers and number two, be fair to everyone. And if we can show the taxpayers that we're doing that, that's the right way to go. So thank you.
I think we also want to be sure we don't spend a lot in this process. So I think the posting it on our website might be a free and easy op, you know, an avenue.
It's already down $19,000 sold.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, could we possibly do the same thing like we did on Block 11 or just put up a sign, a billboard sign there? I mean, a hundred dollars or something there that we'd spend on a sign, this property's for sale?
There's a for sale sign there.
Contact city?
No, that is all through county. Because they are the holders. We're on the back end after it's sold, then it comes into our place where we reassess it.
Okay, so we still have a motion on the table. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, now we will move to a vote. We'll close the voting and that motion does pass. Agenda item number 19, Agenda item number 19 is the vehicle idling policy. Sharon, I'm going to turn to you again.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, there has been pass discussion by the council and I believe direction by the council that we should encourage staff to reduce vehicle idling. And the division heads have communicated that to our staff, that we want to minimize that. In fact, following that discussion, I think a year and a half ago, our law enforcement police department did actually implement a policy on when a car can stay idling based on temperature and a number of other factors. So what this policy does is it, it really puts into place it in writing. And we did have a recent event with an employee, and I don't want to get into a lot of specifics, but one of the. but one of the discussions was, was this a policy violation or not? So it's my recommendation that we actually put this in a formal policy so that there isn't question on whether or not, if it is a violation, it would be if they did not follow this policy. This policy reflects, it's really a lot of verbiage from the city of Mankato and the city of Duluth. And so it kind of melds those two. Also, this week, I gained an intern, and hopefully later on in the meeting, if there's time, she can introduce herself. But what she did this week too, and I'll pass this out, is she did put together some of the benefits of a vehicle idling policy. And again, I know the council has mentioned some of these in their discussions, but just so you have that in writing. And I especially like the bottom bullet, which it does indicate that the city is dedicated to fiscal responsibility and social consciousness, employee concern, and environmental stewardship. So besides making this, you know, the formal process of personnel policy, it does maybe present an opportunity for the city to lead by example, and maybe it'll make some of our general public think about vehicle idling as well. So that's my recommendation, give the writing of the policy, that the city would implement this policy.
Thank you, Sharon. Steve?
So I applaud you for this. I think it's absolutely wonderful. I think the amount of money itself will save on fuel, wear and tear, is well worth it. And then if you see the news write out that the CO2 emissions are rising exponentially and the highest they've ever been in a million years, not that I'm sure we can measure a million years ago, but it does give us a good environmental stewardship. And it leads our city as a green city, like we've already got, so it's consistent with the image that we want to portray it for Marshall. So I'm all in favor of this.
So you're really...
I will make a motion that we accept this verbatim.
I will second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim. Discussion.
This is something, like Steve said, I've visited Sharon on this many times over the last year. I think it's great, too. I am, you know, we talk about, we're looking at, I believe it's Enterprise Fleet, they bring down this fuel consumption. Just shutting cars off will save money. I have a policy implemented, and I do actually have a policy book for my construction company, one that is very close to this, you shut them off. It does save money. It saves health. It also lessens the risk of your vehicle being taken. There was a police car just recently in another town here in Minnesota. He left it idling. He came out from the restaurant. His car was not there. Somebody, we call it borrowed in our house. I think the correct term is stole, though. But so it also decreases that chance. I think it's a wonderful policy.
In Japan, they actually, in Tokyo, if you are stopped at a stoplight because of the huge numbers of cars and people, actually have employees of the municipalities there wave up, and they wave flags that have people stop their cars that don't automatically quit at a stop sign.
And your new vehicles now automatically stop.
Yep. Yep.
Glenn?
Just a couple of questions here. Originally, this was sent out with the package. So was this just some reworking of it, or it's not amendment to an existing policy?
No, it is not. That was a, I had HR review it and format it into the personnel policy manual.
Okay.
So I think the correct one was emailed out.
So it's not like we're amending something that's already there? So, and that's, that's what it looked like before. The, my philosophy tends to be keep it simple. And I sometimes feel like we over-regulate everything we do. We got policies for everything, and oftentimes, people don't even know what's in the policies or read the policies. And do you feel like, and sometimes it's good to have a simple policy, and then if it's not working, amend it and, you know, fix what's not working. Is there a feeling that we really need all this wording here to have an effective policy? Or do we leave some of this to the common sense of the employees to know that we'd encourage them not to keep their engines idling while they're not using them and so forth? I mean, do we feel it needs to be this extensive, or could we do something simpler that's, and still accomplish what we want to accomplish?
Sharon?
It is one page, and I think that is pretty simplistic. And also that we've tried education, information. The division directors have been really supportive of the vehicle idling after the council has brought it up. And yet, we still have instances of this occurring. And unfortunately, we did, you know, like I said, had to take it a little bit step further by doing some enforcement of the council's wishes. So I think it's important that if we need to go in that direction, we need to back it up with policy. And we've tried education and awareness, and I think this just puts it out there. And also, again, like I said earlier, it also maybe sets an example for the public.
I think it provides enough detail that should there be a need for a performance, addressing a performance issue, that this provides enough detail to back that up, and it's fairly straightforward in detail. I also agree with you. I'm an advocate with, for not over-analyzing things.
And what you said answers my question too, and the fact that we've tried something else, and it hasn't really worked. And so this is the next step. And I just want to make sure we did a simpler step to start with. Thank you.
Any other input or discussion on the motion?
Questions for my information, Sharon, them. If the employee has multiple accusations against the mayor for, I mean, how far, I mean, it says adhere to the policy, you shall be grounds for disciplinary action. I mean, employee A gets caught four times. Is there, I mean, well, they didn't do anything to me, the first four, but, you know, just kind of curious.
All of the discipline forms actually stayed on their failure to comply with improvement can result in future discipline, including up to termination.
Okay. Okay.
Any other discussion on the motion?
I move approval of the policy.
Got a motion on the table already, so with that, we will move to a vote.
Didn't mean to step on your motion.
We will close voting, and a motion does pass. We'll move then to council or commission board liaison report from my part. The Regional Development Commission did have their monthly meeting this past week. I attended it. It was actually in Cottonwood, Minnesota. So they, this one, they move around the annual meeting, which the council will receive invitation to. That will be held in Curry, and that will be on the second Thursday of July, I believe it's July 11th, but I would want to double-check that date. Also, at the, at their monthly meeting this past week, last week, they had their public hearing on their annual audit or their annual budget presentation, and there was no public input on that. So with that, Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Airport Commission met last week, and not a lot going on out there, you know, but we did discuss, like, the progress for the Helena property and then other interest in other property for the Clean Approach Ways, and some good discussion about that. A lot of good feedback comment, again, about staff and what a, what a very timely and safe airport we have, especially in lieu of all the weather that we've had. There's a lot of, I haven't heard any negative comment from any of the people that regularly use the airport and with the staff and the service that we get. And I think we can be, you know, we're pretty proud of that. And so the Merit Center, the update that I have is I know construction's going on there, but I don't know a lot of the detail, but that's moving forward. And I know that the activities are up. There's been, Minnesota West held kind of an open professions day last week, late in the weekend, had a lot of attendees, including activity on the track and simulators. And I talked to a couple of instructors from Minnesota West Granite Falls campus that were there and had no idea the amount of things that happened there. So a lot more positive feedback, a lot more activity, you know, just a lot more awareness at the Merit Center. So I see that only continuing to grow, and we're starting to have some classroom conflicts, which is really great news. That's all I have.
EDA meets tomorrow, and the other two have not met.
Glenn?
Public Housing Commission met yesterday, and just a couple items there. Every month, we have a reports from the security officer at the public housing units, and some interesting reading as to what goes on as far as the daily activities of the security officer. But it really, I think, is very beneficial to have such a person there to keep an eye on what's going on at the different units operated by Public Housing Commission. It's money well spent, I think. We also get revenues from the washer dryers in the laundry. And what's interesting on the last report, we got our six-month report, and we've almost hit the budget for the year. We had budgeted five thousand of revenue for laundry, and we're about forty-six hundred, six months into the year. So our revenue source from laundry is way ahead of schedule for that. The federal government is proposing some funding changes for public housing, and it's kind of a complicated area. And the executive director for the Marshall Public Housing Commission will be going to a conference fairly soon, and he's going to be getting back some information at that conference. And there's some funding options that are open to the Public Housing Commission, and we're going to be studying that in the future and decide whether we're going to take one of those different types of funding options. So we'll get more information on that later. That's it.
I wanted to make just a comment on that, Glenn, because that was also a topic of discussion at the Regional Development Commission, is that the HUD or this proposal is that they would stop funding capital improvements. We have benefited greatly from capital improvements, that in the high-rise to the other units around the community, and that those improvements probably wouldn't have been possible, the cash flow, which is the revenue that is provided for the rent. So that places some, I mean, that's going to be serious for housing and for the community if there's no longer money invested in that, and that becomes city responsibility. I think that was part of your, part of the discussion.
Yes. There are different funding options, and what they recommend is you get a consultant or find somebody that will help you go through the paperwork. And a lot of people from HUD don't even understand how this all works. So it's kind of a complicated area. And evidently, there's going to be some attorneys and other individuals that are somewhat experts in this at that conference, and they'll do a better job of explaining what the law is and what the options are, and certainly...
I don't want to plant seeds here, but any chance you could attend that conference also with, well, I mean, in all seriousness...
It's possible, yeah.
Because this is an important issue.
It is.
You know, your background and expertise might be advantageous to just sending the director.
Well, it's something we can look at and discuss, yeah. Thank you.
Mine have not met. Like Steve said, EDA is tomorrow, and MMU's next week. Russ?
Library Board met yesterday. We got the first look at the 2020 budget for the library. They're also starting to have, because of school activities not being, anything held at the after-school anymore, they're starting to have some issues with some middle school kids coming into the library and not necessarily damaging anything, but just making problems. So they've asked Director of Public Safety Jim Marshall to send a squad over there about that time after school, maybe to alleviate some of that. Just an appearance of an officer may take care of some of it. Plum Creek Library, their advertising director, and they had five applicants, and I believe a couple of them withdrew, and they're down to one, as I think they're going to reopen it up. That's what they're leaning toward. Police Advisory Board has not officially met, but I know Director of Public Safety Jim Marshall and others have met to interview the sergeant positions, and CBD will meet next week.
And Jim? Okay. We'll move then to council member individual. I'm Jim Lister. You're in.
I guess I don't have anything, but, you know, as you guys mentioned, HUD thing, I have not heard about that. But that should be a concern of the cities. As I have worked on past projects with Marshall Public Housing, you're talking, some of these projects are several hundred thousand dollars. If we drop that into our levy budget, that's going to be, it's going to make Sharon work a lot harder on our budget. And I mean, this is reoccurring every year that some of these projects make down. So I think that is a conference, you know, Glenn, if you could attend with your knowledge, it'd be really, really good, because it is, it's potential quarter million dollars added to our levy.
Russ?
Just a citizen brought up to me about the parking around West Side, West College Drive. During the construction period, they really liked the four-way stop at the intersection of Fourth Street and West College Drive, and they asked if that could be put back in. And I said, since it's a state highway, I would doubt it very much. One of the things that I've noticed, too, is that in our National Guard, when they have their meetings and that stuff, it's really, they're parking really close to intersections and stuff. And I don't know if there's a magic solution to all that stuff, if they could use a county fair lot or someplace else, but I know that's a little bit hazardous at times. Last week, that Administrator Hanson and John D. Kramer and myself attended a drug force meeting, and I've never had my hands on so much marijuana and meth in my entire life, so...
But you admitted to it.
I'd admit it, too.
But you feel a lot about it.
I didn't have any, it was, let me say, we didn't win any of the door prices that they're giving out, unfortunately. But, well, it was very informative, and believe it or not, if you don't want to admit it, there is a severe drug issue in this part of the state, and it's coming in in liquid form, and it's unbelievable. It was very enlightening to me, I know. That's all I have.
John? I was going to add that as well. It was a very, very good session, very educational on what goes on with the drug task force and the emergency rescue units, what they're all doing. So that was very good. Also, I had a call with the Attorney General's office discussing just potential things that could go on with Rodmer Valley. Yet to be seen if anything comes out of that, that they have any suggestions, but trying to see what the city can do. Either as a sticker or a carrot would be best analogy to try to get some improvements out there. And then last Saturday, I did attend, we got an invite, did attend the cultural conference that was out there at the school, and I found it very interesting, talking about doing that again in the future, maybe expanding on it. That was a good conference. If you get the opportunity to attend one, I would suggest doing so. Even though it was opening a fishing weekend, it was, I thought it was a good Saturday. One of the other things that came up, brought up past, is the trail crossing on County Road Seven. Maybe that might be a little bit easier this year, hopefully with the intersection work done on County Road Seven and 23. May not be quite as much traffic going through, but just when somebody comes up to that intersection to cross over County Road Seven on the trail, there can be some pretty fast-moving cars and trucks going through there. I don't know how or what, if it'd be feasible at all, but one of the things we talked about is maybe like one of the signs over by the high school where it gets activated when somebody walks up and drops the speed limit to 35 miles. Something like that may be kind of interesting, just something to signal that there's people there, people crossing, and perhaps slowing down the traffic because they're going to be, you know, they can get up to 45, 50 miles an hour very easy in that stretch. Offset crossing there, too. So... It's an odd crossing, so it's not really straight. You have to do some, almost some walking on the road, so, yeah. It's probably, if we got a very nice trail, that's probably the worst spot on the trail, right? Well, I'll talk a little bit later, but there are other worse spots, but, okay, all right. Maybe I don't get out that far. I don't know. Okay. So, but probably it's a discussion also with the county engineer, and, yeah. Good, good point. Anything else, John?
Oh, that's it.
Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item is, I'm sure everybody heard, a few weeks ago, we had a significant incident in the area with vandalism to the Magellan Refined Petroleum Pipeline near Cottonwood. And I just want to say that we can take out off... And I just want to say that we can take an awful, awful lot of pride, first and foremost, in the Marshall Fire Department, the training and commitment that those folks have made. And it's something that was one of Mark Clayth's and my focuses when I first came to town, and we've done a lot of training on boom deployment and, and petroleum containment and recovery. And a lot of the equipment caches that were assigned to me that are impossible to use as an individual, although I'm a one-person show, were quite quickly put in with agreement to the Marshall Fire Department and, and other resources that we could bring, and it came out really beneficial, because they, they deployed that night in mutual aid to the Cottonwood Fire Department, and then also worked with the Hanley Falls Fire Department. And the first three of five major boom containment, you know, petroleum containment boom, the first three of, of five sites that were put in were put in primarily with Marshall Fire Department assets and a lot of Marshall Fire Department staff, along with Magellan and Cottonwood Fire. Cottonwood Fire Department actually came up with what I would call a water department MacGyver, and they used a, a high-pressure water main sleeve patch to actually stop the leak within two and a half hours of the release, which I thought was extremely ingenious and, and pretty compelling on their part. It impressed Magellan. I think there's a change in their standard operating procedures now as they interface, knowing that those assets are available. So, from my agency standpoint and from the, from the State Department of Public Safety, there's a huge recognition in what those three fire departments did under mutual aid, and I know Magellan Pipeline appreciates it, but I just want to say that with kind of a little bit of special interest, I think our hat, my hat's really off to Marshall Fire and, and to, to the Lyon County and, and Yellow Medicine County Mutual Aid. Those guys did a lot, and they're going to be offered some additional training now and possibly some additional equipment based on that, because there was a lot of recognition of that. So, that's the first item I have. That's a very positive piece. I appreciate our engineering and building department. I've been getting a number of complaints. Some came to me, some came to Sharon, but then also others that I've been viewing, and it's, you know, the good news is we've had a lot of good college student residents in the community and a lot of others, and, and our rental property sites, I think, have really flourished. The bad news is it's move-out time, and there's not always a lot of understanding about how the trash program works. So, things that don't get picked up, like furniture, beds, stuff, lots of stuff, microwave stuff that mom and dad don't want back home, they thought they'd never see it again when they gave it to them to send it off. Other things end up at the curb not picked up, and then it sits there for a week, and then two weeks, and then three weeks, and then we start getting complaints, or we get irritated ourselves. And, and so I appreciate the focus at the building department and, and our staff do, and this is no dig to them. This is a, my message out to whoever is listening. As residents, as property owners and as tenants, we're responsible for that stuff, and if, you know, if it doesn't fit in your garbage can, they're not going to take it, and you should maybe make a phone call and make arrangements. Mattresses and those things don't go to the landfill anymore, they're recycled at the fairgrounds. So, you know, people that are listening, if you've got a neighbor that you don't think understands, rather than complain about it, go knock on the door and give them a friendly piece of advice, because most of them don't know and appreciate that counsel. So, that's one thing. And then, I know that one of the things that's, was on our agenda is, in the consent agenda, is the public hearing for the MS4 permit program, and that's our municipal requirement to be a municipal stormwater program that Jason and Glenn, and primarily Jason administers that. And we're fortunately into the lawn mowing time, but I see a lot of people think that their grass clippings are appropriate in the gutter, and just simple things like that. So, as people are doing their lawn mowing and fertilizing and that type of thing, if you wouldn't put it in your kid's waiting pool or in their bathtub, don't put it in the gutter. Okay? That's kind of the easiest thing. If you wouldn't bring it in your house, don't put it in the gutter, because it ends up in the river, and then we end up with multimillion-dollar projects, because as the river gets sampled, Marshall's contributing too much. And it doesn't necessarily delineate what's coming point source out of our sanitary sewage treatment plant, or out of the industrial contribution, or what's coming out of our storm sewer. So, when we're putting those nutrients in with the grass clippings and other things, it's no different than us not treating our wastewater. So, if you keep them on the yard, they'll compost and become a nutrient, so you don't have to buy fertilizer and put it on your yard. And I'm burning this because we have time, Jim. I know I promised I'd keep it short.
Well, you're fine.
But, but, so anyway, you know, because I know we've got to be here at least till 5:30. So, I'm going to get on my box, because it's early, and so if, if we can do this, this is my little contribution to free education. If we do just a little bit, each one of us on our frontage to the gutter, it makes a big difference, because it'll change the frequency that we have to run the street sweepers and all the rest of that. The more work we have to do to clean up people's front step, the more we're going to have to spend for surface water assessment, because that's where it comes out of. It is an enterprise fund. We'll be more than happy to clean your front yard for you, but it might be cheaper if you do it yourself. That's all I have.
Thank you.
You're sure?
I'm positive, unless something else comes up. I might think of something else, and then I'll interrupt you.
So, if we're giving accolades, there was recently an accident, fairly bad accident, that caused a fairly large mobilization at the hospital, and it went flawlessly. We got six sick, very injured people out. There was helicopters waiting, and it was just drop in, pick up, go, pop, drop in, pick up, go. And I think there's probably three people alive, that four not that happening, probably not been alive, so... I just give accolades to our hospital, our ambulance service, the coordination of the emergency medical staff. We live in a great place, so... I, I thank everybody for the opportunity to be here. It's awesome.
You know, Steve, when I hear that, that, to me, that's comforting, because something my children have always told, because they, they want us to move to, you know, I speak of Marshall. And one of the things they always say is, well, Duluth has a, a level-one trauma center. Marshall does not. So, they hear that we can respond to an accident like that, like a big city, and get people where they need to be, so they're still alive, is, is wonderful to hear, because that is a selling point of the community, is your health care.
Jim, doesn't it make you a little nervous that your children are concerned that you need to live close to a level-one trauma center?
Great.
Swing and a miss.
And we'll move to Craig.
Trying to fill that time, right? You know, Jim had mentioned about the public housing, and Minnesota has a, a reputation, a good reputation for maintaining public housing. You know, we have some of the best public housing in, in the nation, and so we should be proud of that. And, and I encourage people to go to our high-rise apartment building. It is well-maintained, and I think the residents take pride in, in the way that apartment building looks. And, you know, if there are tenants that act irresponsibly or causing problems, they get evicted. And they, we do, from time to time, have to evict people that don't act responsibly. So, I think we, you know, we can be proud of the public housing we have here in Marshall. And I'm talking about the public housing that's administered by the Public Housing Commission. And, anyway, those are, those are my comments. Thank you.
Well, and I'm the public housing, because we're still killing time. We've had the same director for 35 years, haven't we? Mark Farrell's been there for, since I was delivering papers, and that was 35 years ago.
Not, not that long.
Pretty close, because I, he was there when I was a paper boy.
He was on staff, but he was not the director, so...
He's been there a long time.
He has, yep. Okay. With that, I just have two things, and, um, one is, following up on John's comment, there is on the bike trails, of course, this spring, with the flooding, there was some significant damage that happened to the trails. And now, I'll talk about two areas, and Glenn, certainly you chime in. The, uh, one area is the area where it, um, goes underneath the railroad track in between North Seventh Street and Highway 59. That was a stretch that was one of the original ones that was done at the time when the flood control project was, was constructed, and that one was actually scheduled to be overlaid last year, and because of the weather, it just wasn't possible. The, and then with the flooding that happened this year in that dip, some of you saw it, there was three foot of muck that was in the bottom, and large trees and things, and a portion of the trail simply washed out. The, um, and then in the process of removing that, then there was some additional damage that happened to the trail, because there's just no structural integrity underneath it. So, there'll need to be some emergency replacement, and very likely that bottom portion, that same thing happened last July, not, not to this extent, but, um, but that part that goes underwater probably will need to be beefed up, and it'll need to be concrete up to kind of the waterline and the rest of it overlaid. So, that'll be a project that's kind of, I could put it under the emergency project, and it likely would be eligible if there is reimbursement from the disaster declaration. This was something that was caused by that. The other area that, and Glenn will likely talk about, then, several weeks ago, there was a forecasted heavy rain over a weekend. It actually didn't turn out to be that heavy a rain, but the Corps of Engineers ordered an emergency stabilization of part of the riverbank that was severely eroding, it was, had the potential of compromising the levy. This is West County Road Seven. The, so, there need to be some, like, rocks that were put in there, and the loaders in doing that damaged the, came up over, and then there's, so there was big ruts in the, in that trail. So, that's another area that will need to be replaced, and likely there's a future project that the Corps of Engineers will need to do. So, there'll, there'll be some additional work likely on the trails. So, just a word about the trails, and Glenn, you can follow up on anything. But since we're talking about biking, you all received this flyer in the mail, thanks to Community Services, and in particular Amanda Beckler and Cam Bailey, who have organized this bike share program. The rollout event will be in conjunction with the Bike Safety Day, that will be this coming Monday evening. There are nine bikes in this, and they'll be distributed at those three locations, like the Bike Shop, American, and YMCA. And again, this is the, the start of this project, but they're, all nine of those bikes will be at the rollout event, and what the hope is, is that the entire city council would participate and be on one of those bikes for a short ride, along with the City Administrator Sharon Hanson and Public Safety Director Jim Marshall have also committed to being on there. So, that will fill up the nine bikes, and then other members of the public then. And it'll be a short ride, just down Saratoga, over the bridge, make a loop around, come back. It'll take you 10 minutes, so...
I'm in.
Everybody in?
I'm in.
You have more ambulances, doctors available? Just, just in case, some of us...
I got your back.
Got you, okay.
Two of the bikes are equipped with defibrillator packs. I'm going to ride one, you can have the other one.
I was thinking of Tantan Shaffer, I'd just ride with you.
Okay, that'll work, yeah. That'll all steer.
You know, helmets will be required, but if people have their own helmets, bring them.
Jim, you have a full face, okay?
Otherwise, there will be helmets that will be available. So, thank you, everyone. I think this will be a really nice event, and, and in all seriousness, Cam and Amanda put, really put some good thought into this, and, you know, the hope is that they'll be used. They're researching some trackers that can be put on there, so they can locate. There's a checkout process, but there also is no cost to doing this. So, I'm also participating in an event in the London-Speiser-Wilmer area Friday night, where they're launching theirs. Theirs is in the neighborhood of $100,000 that they're investing in theirs, which is a docking system. There's a bunch of industry dollars from the community that went into that. So, this is not to that extent, but the inaugural one, and may, we'll just see how well it works. Okay? With that, that's all I have, so we'll move along to the staff report. Sharon?
Mr. Mayor and Council, um, three brief items. One is TruShrimp and the City Laverne. There was a lot of discussion about specific conductance and a requirement by Push Control Agency to meet that particular requirement, and supposedly that was one of the factors for TruShrimp to, to move to South Dakota. The PCA, Push Control Agency, is reviewing this standard. I think they're in agreement with relaxing some of those requirements, and the Flaherty and Hood, who is our lobbyist that we contract with for particular environmental issues, did also comment, along with the City of Marshall. I did, on behalf of the city, send a letter requesting that the specific conductance standard be, be looked at for the benefit of businesses here in, in the City of Marshall, and of course, across the state. So, I will give you a copy of that letter. It was, I apologize, I think it was sent out a couple weeks ago, and I didn't quite get that to you, but just a heads up to you on, on background, because there's kind of a lot there. The other item I want to bring up is that the staff, including EDA, Marcia, and Tara, and our engineering staff, along with our city attorney, has done a lot of work on Commerce Industrial Park and getting that particular land certified shovel-ready through the Department of Economic Development in the state of Minnesota. And what it does is it puts you in a statewide database, so if there's developers looking at potential land, they know that since it's certified, things like soil tests, stormwater requirements, survey, title clearance, environmental assessments, those are kind of all ready to go and, and completed. And it did require not only time, but it did include some expenditures to get this, on this list. But we know of another community that has their industrial park land in the certified program, and it did, it did get a developer looking at that property and, and potential future development. So, we are continuing to work on, on seeking out uses for that particular land, and this is one step, and I just want to point out that we put a lot of staff time into this. And then finally, I did mention that we, this week I did gain an intern, and she is here, and Fatu is her first name, and if she could come forward and just briefly introduce herself, mention where she's from and, and her future career goals. She is an SMSU student. She's maybe not as comfortable speaking in front of, of the council or on TV, so please give her as much support as you can, but she, this is an unpaid internship, so it's not going to be an expense to the city, and she's already, like I mentioned earlier, has helped me with some, some items. So, Fatu, if you would like to come forward to the microphone and just introduce yourself.
All right. Hi, everyone. My name is Fatu, and I'm a student of Starwood Minnesota State University. I'm a junior with a political science major and a pre-law minor. And I was born in the capital city of the Gambia, which is in West Africa, and I moved to Seattle, Washington, a few years ago. As a determined human rights lawyer and also a diplomatic ambassador, I plan on attending law school after college. And I think that's about it.
Well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Welcome. And Fatu, I think you should know that our job and Sharon's job is really to be sure that you have a good experience and are successful as an intern here, so... The, before we go to, Sharon, did you have anything more?
No, I didn't.
Before we move to Glenn, and following up on your comments, at the last council meeting about the discharges that are going into our sanitary sewer system, I also wanted to mention, the, the City of Pipestone, within the last month, did adopt an ordinance that is actually a, um, model ordinance that is available through the League of Minnesota Cities, where at real estate transactions, when properties sell, one of the items that has to be certified is that there is no discharge of stormwater into the sanitary sewer system. And that also includes an inspection of the foundation drains, because as you mentioned last time, there's some homes that were, that were built during a timeframe where it was accepted practice to tap the foundation drainage into the sanitary sewer system, and the current owners may have no idea that that is even occurring. So, um, so I just wanted to let you know that that was adopted by a number of cities as close to the City of Pipestone. The other part of that is that there is an inspection requirement, even if the house doesn't, isn't sold, of 10 years, so... So, there is, you know, we talk about how, how can this be inspected? There is an ordinance that the League of Cities has that does provide that opportunity if we really wanted to go down that route. With that, I'll turn to you, Glenn.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll maybe continue on that. The wastewater department has done an inventory citywide of, of residences that have sump pumps that hold... those discharges going to the yard or the street and those in between that do not. And they're all about the same elevation, they all have about similar basements. So, the intent is to identify those ones that don't have and make arrangements with the property owner to just do an inspection if that's appropriate. And so, we'll see how that goes. Probably 60% of the properties are discharging to the yard and the others either are slabit grade or basements that are discharging somewhere else. And like the mayor said, we have several areas that are connected to the sanitary sewer that probably shouldn't be, but that's a big deal. So, it's not something that our wastewater department is, is ready to address at this time. We'll take care of the lower fruit first and try to address that. So, if you have any questions on that or if a property owner has any questions about what they should be doing, give us a call. Our wastewater department is really good to work with and we want to give you the best information and recommendations that we could have. Like we said at the last meeting, we could have a lineup of semis all the way from here to Taunton, ready to discharge water on a daily basis to our wastewater plant. That's not acceptable. So, we need to start doing something before we have to start using the stick. Okay?
Go ahead.
The second item is construction has begun. The Merritt Center project got underway and I tell you what, they had an event at the Merritt Center yesterday that was a pursuit training while we were doing some construction out there. They did make arrangements to be able to do that, but for that day, but it probably won't be available for next Monday and Tuesday event. So, we're looking at relocating that to Air Park East so that there is space there. We're getting hold of Bruce Verdos and trying to make that work for next, next week. But you can see by what they were doing yesterday that this expansion of the track will be wonderful for that type of training and that type of operation. So, a good start was made. Saratoga Street got under construction for some of the fine tuning and landscaping items on the, from the west side now proceeding east. We've got a lot of minor, we call them minor things, but could be fairly major to the adjacent property owner to get done with Saratoga Street. See, Mindot has begun repairing their potholes on Main Street. I know that's been an issue and, but they got to it finally now too. We have, if you go around town, make sure you notice how much damage there's been to the street sections through town. That's, that's statewide. We have such a high water table. We've had some comments, I'll give you an example. We have a farmer just on the west side of County Road 7 that gave us a call and said, Glenn, I've got water coming up through the soil. Is there a water break over there? And I said, sorry, we don't have a water main over there. And one of our employees lives over there too. And at their place, I've never seen water come out of the drain tile around their house full, or I'll say full, constantly. The water table is so high, you'll see the streets buckling and having problems. We had one street, Fairview Street, I'll give you an example. We had scheduled for a mill and overlay. There's no way that we're going to mill and overlay that street. It's essentially disappearing in the last three weeks. So, we're taking a look at that. Right now, we've got about $80,000 to $100,000 of additional street repair that we'll maybe have to make toward mid-summer or later. We certainly don't want to do it now with the water table right under the surface. If you did a reconstruction, you could put in the tiles necessary underneath the surface to take that underground water away. That wasn't ever considered 30 years ago when they constructed the streets. So, just be ready for a discussion of that. Look at the streets that are essentially going back to gravel in certain larger, larger areas, but we won't be working on them significantly until the water table goes down and that will hopefully be this summer. I'll just stop there. That's all we have for now.
Okay, thank you. Craig, do you have a comment?
It'll wait. My discussion will wait till later.
Dennis?
I noticed a time that we've scheduled for public hearings now. I'd hate to take away from this.
So, we will, we will move then to, thank you, Dennis. We'll move to agenda item number four. This is a public hearing and I'll open this public hearing. It's a public hearing on private use of public streets and parking lots for August 16 to 18. This is for sounds of summer, so we'll open up for this public hearing. Staff have any input?
Just a little bit. This is a regular annual event. The only difference on this one is the use of the gravel parking lot that we have on our RFP for redevelopment and we certainly recommend the approval of the entire event and then making that portion subject to working with the redevelopment of the block. I think there should be no issue whatsoever with working with anyone on this event at that date.
Any other input as part of this public hearing?
Move we close the public hearing?
Second. Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim to close the public hearing. Discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion does pass, we'll note one abstention. The agenda item number five would be to consider the approval of the private use of the public streets and parking lot for sounds of summer, August 16 to 18.
Move approval?
Second. Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion. We'll move to a vote. Close the voting. Motion passes. We'll move then to agenda item number six, sounds of summer, the, consider the approval of the parade, which will be held August 17, 2019.
I make motion approve.
Close the public hearing.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Steve for the approval of the parade, August 17. Discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. Move then on the award of bids. Agenda item number seven is the award of bids of chip sealing on various city streets. We have a resolution accepting a bid and awarding the contract. Glenn?
We received two bids. They were very close. We're recommending award to the low bidder, Allied Blocktop Company of Maple Grove, $164,452.
I have a question on that. With, it is because the gentleman from Russell is local and you're within $500 on $164,000 bid. Can we choose to go with the local company?
Dennis, this is a question for you.
The answer is no.
Okay.
You have the obligation of low responsible bidder.
Okay, thank you.
Other discussion? Or other?
Can I add to that? That would be if we accepted sealed bids on the, for a potential project. If it was just getting quotes, then there's more latitude.
Right, but this is an amount we hadn't received sealed bids.
Right. Just as a distinction if, because we recently didn't give it to the low bidder for a project and that was obtaining quotes. It wasn't a sealed bid process. And I, my understanding is on some vehicle purchases, we haven't always gone with a low bid, i.e. the state contract potentially. Those aren't sealed bid processes, so.
Yeah, that answer applied to this specific question on sealed.
Yep, okay.
Other questions?
I make motion accept.
I'll second. Motion by Jim, seconded by John. Discussion. My only discussion I'll be voting against, I think, two things. One is the, there was a recent Mindot research report that did not show value in chip sealing and extending the life of roadways. And I think this, this street maintenance dollars would be better directed to overlays rather than chip sealing. Other discussion on the motion?
Can you forward that information? I did not see that.
Yeah, that's good information.
With that information, can we postpone the bid to all get that information? I would retract my motion to receive that information and then read that and bring this back up in two weeks.
Did we have a comment from the city engineer?
Right, I'm not sure I really want to derail the recommendation because I typically always want to support the recommendation of staff, but I think you're aware of that study. I think we've talked about that.
Yeah, LRB has been tasked with that, that process. That was some Mindot person's opinion and that's why it's going for review. It also depended upon types of oil, location, north or south. There's a whole lot of things, but we certainly may change our procedure in the future, but it has not been as a recommendation by Mindot at this time. The other thing we should bring up is that when these projects were constructed, the property owners were given the assurance that after seven years, they would get a chip seal of their street. And if you look at the chip sealing that we've done in the last few years, it really does make a nicer looking sealed street over the cracks in there. So, we're, we're going to recommend that it be done. If you wish not to, that's certainly up to you, but until the official word comes in, we're still recommending the process that we use. I would like to use the money elsewhere too, but I think this receives a benefit.
With the new information, I haven't read the information. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but that's where, how do I, I want to remove my motion. But I would like the information before I move forward.
If you're removing your motion and then the second then would be removed also? Who seconded?
I'll remove my second.
And I would.
If we're not, I guess one of the questions would be, are we putting anything in jeopardy by waiting the two weeks?
I don't, I believe that we have the right to go 60 days on the bid. I can certainly check.
I would entertain an alternate motion to postpone action on this until the next regular council.
I would make that motion.
I will second that.
Motion by Jim, seconded by John. Discussion?
The tabling?
Table until the next regular council meeting.
Glenn, how likely is it that we're going to get definitive information as to whether or not there are benefits? Is it likely we're going to get it in a short period of time or is this something that's going to be years before we know?
No, I think, I think we can get a indication now, but it probably won't be a policy.
We can get the, and Glenn, I know you weren't at that meeting, but it was at one of the ATP meetings where one of the Mindot engineers from the Wilmer District made that presentation. So, yep. So, we can have that PowerPoint presentation available.
Chip sealing debate is out there and in full effect right now. I don't think in two weeks, you're going to have an answer as to whether it's the end-all, be-all or not. Mindot doesn't even agree on whether chip sealing is the right thing to do. District 8 thinks that maybe you should do it one year after you put the pavement down, maybe right after the paving machine goes through, maybe within three years. District 7 might say it's seven years. It's all over the map. We've asked LRB as a city engineers association to look into it, provide us with more definitive research and information. You're not going to get that for a while. Right now, most city engineers are chip sealing still to preserve the life of the pavement because it does make sense that you get a benefit from it. It's just not really quantified as to what that benefit is and whether the cost benefits there. But it's really cheap to chip seal and you're adding oil and rock for protection. It's still kind of recommended for the cost.
And the thing that I'll add to that too is that the other option is when you have the cracks in the, in the street is to go in and crack seal and to try to keep that water from penetrating and getting underneath the pavement or in the crack of the pavement. And again, it's not, I think the bond is better there with, you don't see the re-crack with the chip seal. And the other part of that is, is the mastic that you typically use for crack seal, a lot of times you'll see it lift and reapplied in a strip that's not in the crack and there's just all kinds of other issues with that. So, I think that part of it, the benefit, when you start to see the road opening up a little bit, I think there is a benefit to chip seal. Having done it with the city of Stewart for a number of years as the public works person there, we didn't have that nice of streets and without that chip seal, we would have really had garbage as it started to go if you didn't catch it at least right away and it was still a Band-Aid. Number two is, is I'll remind you that the chip seal at Red Baron Arena is to fix another problem too, is to give us a uniform look again so that we can actually stripe it correctly. So, the one thing I will say is as we go through this, if we can in the bids split out, if we don't have to accept them in their entirety, if the decision is not to seal the streets, that we consider at least doing that parking lot because that absolutely needs to happen.
That's a good point.
We've also got the fire department parking lot in there as well.
And I just, I guess with the information, I'm just looking for information so we can, let us, that's what we can all make a very informed.
I think the tabling is good.
And I think we're always open.
Good to wait two weeks if we're not putting anything else in jeopardy to research this.
We're always open to reviewing those documents too, Mayor, as we go forward.
Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
Any other discussion on the motion to table?
Just one last thing here. So, over the next two weeks before we have to make a decision, we'll, council will get information about this from staff and so we can look it over ahead of time and have sufficient time to study it, so.
Yeah, I think you'll get, like Jason said, a different set of recommendations no matter, depending upon who you ask for it from. The reason that they want to do it right away, Mindot wants to do it right away, is they said, if you've got oil on the mix on the surface, it's there. Some people don't want to let that evaporate, that oil that's in the existing mix and want to put that seal coat on it right away to keep that oil on. The next argument is, well, why not let it evaporate for three years and let that top get a little bit dry and then put that next layer of oil on? And then the next discussion is, well, why not wait the seven years like's always been the recommendation because there's not a lot that's gone away. More has gone away. You can add a little more oil and put that chip, the chips on then because that'll give you more than just protection of the bottom, gives you skid resistance, new skid resistance because every year we've laid some of that off with our snow removal operations. So, it's not immediate, it's not the initial cost, it's down the road. So, yeah, we could, we will provide you with that information. I think that you'll get the same recommendation from us at the next meeting, but.
I think recommendations should be definitive by the staff when, when we meet again in two weeks with the information.
Given the time, I would like to move us to a vote. Motion on the table is to table. Close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda item number eight, the Han Road Drainage Project. Glenn?
We recommend the award to ANC Excavement of Marshall, NIMO 136. Nine seventy-four bids were received. They're the low responsible bidder and the project is being paid for by surface water funds.
Questions?
Second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. Motion passes. We'll move then to agenda item number nine, Country Club Drive Utilities Improvement Program. We have a resolution to consider that we accept the bid and award the contract. Glenn?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This one did only have one bidder, local contractor, D&amp;G Contracting from Marshall/Lynn, and it's for utility replacements only in that section initiated by MMU. We would recommend approval.
I so move.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion?
I just, I had brought this up with Glenn, but there's a fairly, what is it, 5% difference between the engineer's estimate and the low bid. So, my question was, why? And Glenn did give me a good, good answer, so.
Any other discussion on the motion?
Glenn, real quickly, affected businesses in that area? I mean, you got Amprad West, Dairy Queen.
Little Dairy Queen.
The small Dairy Queen.
Yeah, and Ampride West, are you going to allow access in and out of those places?
Yeah. Jason, any comments for access?
There should be pretty minimal disruption. We're working behind the curve for most of the way. It'll be in the intersection, fourth and Country Club for a while, or detour.
Fourth and Country Club is the biggest issue, because all the utilities in that intersection are being reconstructed.
Hate to have that Little Dairy Queen not accessible.
I'd be sure it is.
We can park a little bit and bike in.
We understand.
Just have to eat there.
Make sure. Okay, any other discussion on that motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion does pass. So that then brings us to Agenda Item Number Twenty-Eight. Is there anything else to come forward?
Did we have Sharon's report yet?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
It was memorable.
To most it was, yes. Any other discussion or any other items to come forward? If not, Agenda Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Russ, to adjourn. We'll move to a vote. Or not, right. Voice vote.
You can vote.
You got it.
Don't drag us down now.
Close the voting. And the motion does pass. We're adjourned.
You're waiting all night for that, John.